Welcome, everybody, to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If I can ask everybody to please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Jason Garcia, the pastor of Celebration Church, and I'll ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear God, we want to thank you for everything you've done in Fair Hope so far. We pray over this meeting that you help us steward what you've given us, Lord. God, give us wisdom and insight over tonight. Help us to make Fair Hope the best that it can possibly be. We want to thank you in advance for the things that you've done, that you're doing, and that you will do in the future. God, we pray that we can make Fair Hope the best and greatest place for our friends, our family, and our community. Thank you so much for this great city. You name it, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Garcia. Appreciate you. Okay. Also, we've got one item to add to the agenda. If I could ask you to add a resolution authorizing the trigger points for the shutting down of the city if necessary related to tropical storm, as a clerk has told us in the last meeting, now Hurricane Zeta. I do want to make a couple of changes as it was presented to you prior to the meeting. I have talked to Ms. Walker and Mr. Johnson, and we made a few changes just based on the 5:30 update today. And if you'll go down to paragraph three, and we changed the first 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 27th, just because the timing of this is going to be a little bit later, and also there's a 5:30 briefing, so we felt that the 6:00 p.m. time would make it a little bit more reasonable. And then also, instead of saying we'll be closed on Wednesday, October 28, 2020, it'll say be closed on Wednesday, October 28, 2020, at 3:00 p.m. because the forecast is such that the city workers should be able to get in almost a complete day that day. And then the determination as to whether or not to reopen on Thursday, October 29, 2020, will be made no later than Wednesday, October 2020, at 5:00 p.m., so scratch noon and put 5:00 p.m. on that. And I did ask both Ms. Walker and Mr. Johnson, and they said that all supervisors should be able to notify employees that should be adequate time to let everybody know whether or not they have to come to work. Richard or Jessica, did I miss anything on that that you can think of? All right. That's the last item on the agenda. Should it be added to the agenda? So that will be added as item 18. May I entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add that resolution?
I would say I make a motion to add the resolution to the agenda as amended with updated dates and times.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to amend tonight's agenda to add the resolution pertaining to Hurricane Zeta, trigger points for Hurricane Zeta, and the city's closing. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of amending tonight's agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Item one, is the approval of the minutes of the October 12 regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes, council?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Say it. We have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Mayor's report? Does someone have a mayor's report to present tonight? Okay. We'll move on. Public participation. If you would like to address the council on items five through now 18, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I'll remind everybody there'll be another opportunity to address the council for non-agenda items at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Brown.
Yeah, if we could have everybody just come down in front of the dice. Why are you in the middle?
I'm hoping you're about to give me something.
Maybe. Folks, as you know, tonight is Councilman Robinson's last regularly scheduled council meeting, and we hope maybe his last council meeting because I don't want to have an emergency meeting related to this storm, but that's no offense to you, Jay. I want to say that Jay has been truly an outstanding council member. His wisdom, his knowledge, and the time that he puts forth, week in and week out for the past four years, has been nothing short of remarkable, and it's been a pleasure to serve you, Jay, and you, true gentleman. And you've got a new addition to your family, to your lovely family, a fourth child, a daughter, born just a few short weeks ago, and I know you're going to look forward to having some more time to spend with that large family that you have. Robert, you'll say a few words.
Yeah, just echo, just been a pleasure serving with you, Jay. Jimmy, yourself, and myself's first term, that's some challenging times, but you helped us forge through it, and without, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I've got a few things, a few things to say. First and foremost, as much as I will miss Councilman Robinson, I won't miss having to follow behind him on council comments. Always a challenge, but had not ever even met Jay Robinson before we ran for council. My first, my first interaction with the Robinson family, actually, we were all, apparently we were house hunting at the same time, and my wife and I found a house we really liked on Nelson, and we were about to put an offer in, and my wife said, oh, I just found out the Robinsons put an offer in on this house. I said, okay, well, I've never heard them. I said, what do you want to do? She said, oh, we're out. She said, we're not, we're not going against the Robinsons. She said, you can't do that. I said, so you're telling me we can't buy a house because somebody I've never heard of is buying this, is putting an offer in? She said, that's exactly what I'm telling you. She said, if you knew, if you met this family, you would understand, and she was 100% right. I mean, it has been a pleasure serving with you, and although I didn't know you going into this, I feel like I wound up with a wonderful friend in Jay and his family, and just really grateful for four years to serve side by side with you, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Robert. I appreciate it.
You want to say anything?
Standing right here in the middle of the room, you guess?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess. I'm never one shy away from the opportunity to speak. You know, look, it's been, it's been a very long, interesting four years from the very beginning. You know, like Jimmy said, I didn't know any of these guys before I got here, and you know, it's been probably the greatest honor that I've had so far, to be able to serve this community. And I'd like to thank a lot of people. First, thank you to the citizens for giving me the opportunity to serve. I truly appreciate it, and it's been one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. I want to thank the employees in the room. I've said this before plenty of times, you guys are truly what keeps this city going. You don't always get the credit you deserve, but you're one of the things that make living here so special, and so thank you. You know, I wanted to thank Kevin also, but Jimmy, Jack, Robert, and Kevin, who knows not to hear. You know, the sacrifice that goes into this, that people don't see, the time that's taken outside of this meeting that nobody truly appreciates, your sacrifice, your service, your leadership, and most importantly, your friendship, you know, has really been a blessing to me and my family, and you're truly appreciated. Lastly, Artz.
Artz, you to write that down?
Yes, Artz Robinson. You are truly special. But, you know, to my, to my family, thank you also, you know, the support and the understanding of the time it takes, you know, the hours on the phone, outside, pacing in the front yard, you know, the meetings, the best dinners, the best practices and games, I truly appreciate it. Alex, my true superstar, I definitely wouldn't be here without you. Number one, because you encouraged me to run and supported me throughout that process, but most importantly, most of the votes I got were only because I was married to you. And I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody disputes that. But, you know, I'm not sitting here anymore, but I don't plan to disappear. I got into this to serve. I still plan to do that in any other way that I can. And so I'm just incredibly thankful for the opportunity. I'm incredibly thankful for the relationships I've created, and I just appreciate everybody doing that. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a little something to give you, Jay. We should have dusted that off a little bit, but anyway, this is the picture of you that hung in the, right out there in the foyer. It was. He will still be a councilman. He's still got a week to go, roughly, maybe 15 minutes shy of a week, but.
So get your request in. I'm saying yes to everything. Thank you again, Jack. Thank y'all, buddy. Thank y'all.
Yeah. Thanks. Can you get a picture? Get a picture? You drop these.
I'm just.
You okay with that?
Just don't breathe on me.
You're on that wave. Should I showcase my face also?
This is good. That's perfect. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I got a, no, that's it. I'm done. Thank you, Jack.
Councilman Conyers.
No, I think I'm good.
Councilman Brown?
No comment.
Okay. And I don't have any council comments other than those earlier stated, just good luck, Jay. I'm sure we'll see you around town a lot, and thanks for your service. Okay. Item number five is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1510 and repeal ordinance number 1600 regarding the health insurance benefits for option two and adding a group life insurance program for full-time employees with a benefit of $25,000 basic life insurance, which includes accidental death and dismemberment insurance. Before I ask someone to introduce that, we would make the change under section 6.01 Health Insurance Benefits, the change of current employees to those employees hired prior to October the 1st, 2017. And with that change, I will ask somebody to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Kim has asked us to consider passing this tonight. Jay, you're usually the one that asks this to be laid over, but since you made the comment that you're saying yes to everything, if you want to, if you want to make the motion to suspend with rules and vote for immediate consideration, I'll ask you to make that motion.
I will make a motion to suspend. And for immediate consideration.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? I do want to say, well, on the vote of immediate consideration, clerk, call the question, please.
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye. Okay. And now for final adoption, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I would like to say, under discussion, that the, our insurance consultant for the option two did recommend, if you look down to number three, which are the rates, single 25, family 150, I'm very sensitive of this, they recommended rates higher than that, starting now. We are phasing that in, though, for the first year because we didn't want that to be a shock to everyone, 1575 for FY 2021, and then 25150, starting in FY 2022. So it's a phasing in of that, and it's still less than what our consultant had suggested, trying to keep the cost down for our employees. Any further questions on that? Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. No questions or no discussion. Clerk, I'll ask you to call the question for final adoption.
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries, and welcome to present this at the Benefits Fair on Thursday now. Item number six is a resolution. The city council hereby approves the following recommendations from Cobb's Allen along with the city treasurer, Kim Creach, for our short-term disability, long-term disability, and add to group life insurance by moving the city's short-term disability and long-term disability programs, and to add a group life insurance program to One America based on ancillary marketing results effective January the 1st, 2021, and make the attached medical Blue Cross Plan Option Two benefit changes effective January 1, 2021. Kim, I did have one question for either you or Sharice. The ordinance talked about the option two beginning FY 2021, but I believe just due to, is it due to notice requirements that this begins January 1?
It's going to be a January 1 because that's what we're doing open enrollment for, is January 1 of '21.
So those others have been calendar year then, instead of fiscal year?
They were fiscal year in last year. Last January, we changed our Blue Cross Plan to be January 1 because of open enrollment.
Okay.
Our stop loss goes fiscal year from October through September, but our plan itself is, the Blue Cross Plan is January through December.
Right. I just wondered if we shouldn't have done that. You know, that was probably an old ordinance that we scavenged, and should we have maybe put calendar year in that? Made me think of that. Is that a FY 2021 or?
I thought it said January 1st.
The item six does say January 1st. Item five, the previous ordinance that we just passed, though, says FY 2021. I hate to go backwards, but, Jay, you're not done yet. What do you think?
I think you can change it to make it more specific and more clear, better safe.
Should the previous ordinance?
Mm-hmm. And the rate should be effective for the January is premiums is going to be January 1 of '21, but we'll start collecting, yeah, in January.
Yeah. I think we got to go back to five, guys.
Okay.
Not to get anything to eat, but may catch that? We got to go back to five, guys? Okay. Let's, clerk, what do you do on that ordinance?
I think somebody's going to have to remove their motion.
Rescind the motion?
Rescind the motion.
That's the easiest thing? Who made the motion?
I think, uh.
Jimmy.
Okay. I rescind the motion.
Jimmy, you rescind the motion?
Yep.
Do we have to vote on that as well?
Yes, you do.
Okay. To rescind the motion?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
To rescind the motion, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll just say we're going to change the dates on the previous motion. Okay. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye. Okay. And now, since we're amending that, do we have to reintroduce it?
You don't have to reintroduce it. You just need to amend it.
Amend it. Okay. So I will ask for an amended motion.
So moved.
To pass the ordinance with the changing items, two and three, under section 6.01, to plan will increase to the following beginning January 1, 2021, and then under number three, it'll say high deductible plan will increase to following for CY, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2022. Okay. Somebody make the motion for final adoption for that amended ordinance.
So moved.
Say it. Okay. All right. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye. Okay. We got that business taken care of. All right. So on item six, did we have a motion and a second?
No, you do not.
Okay. Good. So does anybody have any questions for Kim on that? Or Sharice? Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion, pass the resolution for item six then.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, council. Sorry about that. I just, I think it matters to get an ordinance with that magnitude correct. Okay. Item number seven is a resolution. The city of Fairhope hereby adopts and approves, approves the proposed Fairhope Public Libraries budget as presented for FY 20 to '21. You should now have that budget, and I'll turn your attention to the outside income about, you know, near the bottom, 303, item 303, you'll see the 2019, 2020 appropriation at 859401, being reduced to 816431, and you see the details of those reductions in expenditures on the following three pages. And I had asked Tamara Dean, the executive director of the library, to make the cuts where she deemed necessary, and us not make them. I just, you know, gave her the stipulation it needed to be 5%. Also acknowledging that if we have revenues that exceed projections, that we reserve the right to give that 5% back to them. So any questions about that? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed Fairhope Public Libraries budget.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Okay. And also wanted to mention also that the reason we were doing this was that, and carving this out of our budget now, was that they are up against some deadlines to receive some, some state funds, and they needed a budget that's been passed by the council to, to, to be timely in applying for those funds. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item eight is a resolution, the City Council hereby approves and authorizes the City of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation and the City of Fairhope for a five-year term, beginning January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2026, with a five-year option at the city's council, at the city council's discretion unless modified by joint written agreement of the foundation and the city council. And I did say there was one change from what you had been given earlier in the week, and that is under item 11. It says, should the foundation be required to enact the force majeure clause, the party shall negotiate a pro rata or lesser amount in lieu of the yearly compensation of $20,000 to the city. In other words, if we run into, so in item four, there's a yearly compensation of $20,000 to the City of Fairhope. And if we were to run into a pandemic, a natural disaster, or otherwise, it would prevent them from having a normal arts and crafts festival. They would not be required to give the full 20,000 and we could negotiate another number. Any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Second, okay, we have a motion in a second to approve and authorize the signing of the MOU with the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution, the City of Council approves the selection of Volker to perform professional engineering and C and E services for the installation of the UV Cigna disinfecting at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant, and hereby authorizes Council President to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm, which I will bring back to you for approval. Entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, Michael, we'll get together on that. Item number 10 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure foods for the jail inmate meals for FY 2021. The items are available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which has been nationally bid, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost estimated at $68,000. Said this has gone through Sourcewell. Is there anyone here to, Kim? Yep.
What this is, the jail has made some changes on their meals. They were getting individual meals, microwaving them, and now they're changing where this will save money. They're buying the meals in bulk, and they've, they're purchasing some more ovens to be able to heat these meals up so it'd be in bulk in which, you know, they'll be able to serve, serve them that way, which will save money from buying individual meals.
Right. And the only thing that I want to add to this, and it really is not picking on this procurement whatsoever, but it's just a statement in general, is that we also have to be careful when we go through these co-ops, that they are the lowest price because they might be the lowest price, and they're probably going to be the easiest way because it's already been bid. But sometimes when we want to take the easy way, we may or may not be getting the best price. I just want to ask you all to continue to, you know, spot check prices and make sure that when we go through a co-op, that it is the lowest price because there are times at which you can go outside a co-op and get a, get a lower price. So I know that you all know that, but just want to keep that on everybody's mind that, you know, we need to fact check this stuff from time to time. All right, any questions for Kim? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution to purchase the jail inmate meals for FY 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a 22-foot prelit LED panel Christmas tree for lighting of the tree celebration 2020 for the Community Affairs Department with a total cost of $13,197, which includes shipping. Ms. Walker, you were at the weather briefing in the work session, so you'll brief us on this.
Yes, so last time I was here, we talked about changing up the Christmas tree lighting because of COVID and what that would look like. We presented to you at that time that we would look for a Christmas tree to put on the clock corner right there. This Christmas tree, the 22-foot tree, we have an option to add panels to that through, over the next couple of years as we have budget, or if we choose to do that. We do have a warranty with this, and this does reflect a price that is a little bit reduced from what it would normally be.
Why, why, you know, a 22-foot artificial tree as opposed to just going out and buying a 20-foot tree that's cut down and we wrap it with lights and decorate it?
So it does come prelit, that's one of the wonderful things about this particular tree. It gives us the option to look like a tree during the day, but it's got maintenance that's a little bit easier for us. We're not having to water a cut tree at that corner, and it has a nice presentation throughout the season.
Is there a picture included in this packet?
I don't think so, I couldn't find one. I got a photo of it.
I'll find you one.
Just a little area spending $13,000 on a tree without looking at it. We've had a little issue with trees here lately.
I don't, I don't disagree with you there. Yeah, I can find, certainly find a photo and send it to you specifically for this tree. But, but, you know, this was our way of kind of, we know that people are getting a lot taken away from them this year. We understand that, that people really look forward to this lighting of the trees. It's not really fun to have to change what, something that we've always done, something that's a tradition. This is, is kind of a way to really utilize that clock corner that we have right now, make it center of town, and allow, you know, something pretty wonderful and festive right there. To go on that little lawn. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting it to come up. What other questions can I answer for you while I'm trying to make the internet work?
So you're envisioning that this would be like right there in the, well, right now it's grass?
Correct. We had recommendations for it to be anywhere from 24 to 26 feet. That's significant price difference than what we see right now. Obviously, if you get it there this year, you think it needs to be bigger. We have the option to add those panels on in the future. We can certainly make this a Mardi Gras tree as well. I mean, we have, have multiple options here. And it's not coming up, I'm really sorry. I understand you want this photo, but the internet does not want you to have it, so here we go. This is a 42-foot tree, I'm not really sure how to show it so everybody can see it. I'll be happy to walk it up there and let you see it. But I have a 42-foot tree that's similar to the 22-foot tree. I'd love to walk it up there if you allow me.
Please. So it, I guess when I saw panel, I was thinking it was a flat dimensional, yeah.
Yeah, no, it did look like a tree, but it's just as maintenance, it was easier.
Which size is that one?
That one's a 42-foot.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was gonna say, that's massive.
Very nice. So what other questions can I answer about the tree? I should note too, that we will be saving a significant amount of the budget that we haven't passed yet for tree lighting because we won't be doing a stage like we previously have, because we will not be doing entertainment in the way that we previously have. I think we normally budget about $13,000 for that. Obviously, we will have some of that that we will need to use for lighting and for, for, you know, whatever we need to do down there, but it's not going to touch that $13,000.
Just, I just don't know why we couldn't find a 20-foot, you know, tree that you cut. And as far as not watering, we have a water truck that goes around every corner about every day.
I'd love to get the Public Works Director's opinion on that because that would become a maintenance issue for them. I don't think you want me to try to keep that tree alive for all of Christmas, so.
I mean, but neither is the one I put in my living room either, that just has water in the pot. I mean, it's, but it's a real tree. I just, I don't know, folks, I don't know, $13,000 for a tree is a lot. But is it, is it something that we can reuse?
For years, certainly. We have, I think it's got a five-year warranty, maybe a 10-year warranty on it. It's powder coated, it is, you know, protected for weather even here in our coastal climate, so.
All right, folks, here goes the bombshell. We have been asked by ADEEM to do some more exploration on the clock corner. They may be digging that up. Richard, had to bring it up tonight. And we're gonna, we're gonna argue that point, but they've asked for more soil samples there, quite a bit more. I don't want to spend $13,000 on a tree with nowhere to put it, which has me concerned. And I didn't want to mention that because I didn't want to raise an issue that may not be an issue, but it's a possibility.
Certainly.
That you didn't know about. So.
Yeah, I really can't speak to that. I do know that this is something we did present two weeks ago, is a possible idea. This is me bringing it to you, we are clearly in a time crunch for something that's going to happen on the November the 19th, so.
All right, so that's some things to think about. Might, might not, we may not touch that, but we might. Anyway, something to think about. All right, any questions, counsel? I'll let up sour the mood. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the procurement to purchase the tree.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Leave it passed, three to one. Good. Motion carries, thank you, counsel. All right, item 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure potting soil for FY 2020 for the Public Works Department from Sungrove Horticulture Incorporated as sole source distributor and authorize procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be $49,135. That's five truckloads of 900 bags, 1078 per 50-pound bag, plus $125 per truckload. I'll entertain a motion to purchase the potting soil.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution, the City Council hereby repeals Resolution 2316-15 and hereby establishes a pedestrian and bicycle committee for the City of Fairhope, and the following rules are set forth to govern its operation in proposed, in the proposed resolution. You all have the new rules of procedure. You have any questions for Robert for these?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of approving the new rules? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution, the City Council approves and authorizes the application for the fiscal year 2021 Airport Improvement Project funding for the Fairhope Airport Authority. Is Mr. McInerney here? Okay, this is just a technicality whereby we ask the FAA for our appropriation, and the city has to sponsor it, so we are asking, I'm trying to find the amount in here. Okay, I don't, I don't see it in here, but it does say the City of Fairhope would approve any amount of funding needed from the City of Fairhope, but there is none required from the City of Fairhope. So it's just a technicality. So I'll entertain a motion asking you to approve and authorize the application for fiscal year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 15 is a resolution, and I'm going to read the amended resolution. Let the City Council awards an RFP for a $5 million revolving line of credit. Say I am. Right one here. Okay, revolving line of credit to Community Bank to be drawn as needed for cash flow purposes to fund Hurricane Sally FEMA reimbursable expenditures for the city cleanup costs at a rate of 0.78%, plus a fee of $1,500. The city's repayment obligations under the line of credit will be evidenced by the city's $5 million general obligation warrant series 2021, known as the warrant. The line of credit and the warrant are to have terms of no more than two years. Council President Jack Braille shall be authorized to execute the line of credit. Entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 16 is a resolution, the City Council hereby amends Resolution 3850-20 to increase the cost by $4,000 and approves the procurement for Citizen Serve software to be used by the Planning and Building Departments from Online Solutions LLC and authorizes the procurement in the amount of $115,500. And as Eric mentioned to us, it was just, he had misstated the number when they passed it through. The cost was actually 115.5, not 111.5, and this will correct that. So I will entertain a motion to amend the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to amend the resolution, increase the cost by $4,000. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a site plan review and approval at the request of Chris Haley on behalf of Left Rigor LLC for the approval of Portico Phase II, a 56-unit project, and amendment to the existing site plan located at the northeast corner of Fairhope Avenue and Brown Street, and approved contingent upon conditions recommend, recommended by the Planning Commission. Mike?
Evening, counsel, council president. Jake, good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
As it says, a site plan approval, Chris Haley is with us tonight on behalf of Left Rigor, can answer any questions as well. This is an amendment to an existing site plan. It's approximately 3.52 acres. It's zoned B2 and is now inside the Central Business District. It is at the northeast corner of Fairhope Avenue and Brown Street. Leib Engineering was engineer of record for the project. On the screen, you can see on the left is the zoning map, and on the right side of your screen is an aerial. In a future slide, there'll be a more up-to-date aerial showing the existing site as is. Just a couple of quick comments, the original approved development was for seven two-story buildings that had a total of 33 residential units and 23 commercial units. The proposed site plan includes 12 cottages, four townhomes, and two three-story buildings that each contain eight flats and two commercial units apiece, with commercial on the first floor, residential on the third floor. So you have a, the next is kind of going over the square footage. Some of that has been altered, and you'll see once we get to the Planning Commission recommendation as far as what the residential or commercial use shall be. The approved site plan had approximately 77,000 square foot of usable space, and the proposed site plan has roughly 90,000 square feet of space. The applicant's requesting that the site plan to be approved with a six-foot sidewalk along Brown Street and Stimson Avenue. The sidewalk along Fairhope Avenue complies. In the staff report, it goes into a little bit more detail. In the Central Business District, now that the site is located here, requires that there be an eight-foot sidewalk, and the City Council may approve a site plan with sidewalks no smaller than six feet. The revised type plan that has been submitted shows those sidewalks being six feet along Brown and Stimson as it is. This is the original site plan that is on your screen. Little hard to see, but you can see that the seven buildings are located around a, mostly a central green. The existing site is at the bottom right-hand of your screen. That building is built, and the parking lot behind it is currently a grassed area when you drive along Fairhope Avenue where the future development is to go. This is the proposed site plan. To get on the bottom right is the existing building. The townhomes are located to the north with the other proposed commercial residential buildings beside the existing building fronting on Fairhope Avenue, and the 12 cottages located on the north side and west side of the property along Brown and Stimson. This is the aerial showing you the existing site with the site plan overlay on top, kind of give you a better view of what it looks like now and what the future product could look like. The amended site plan, some of the notes on here, the staff's original recommendation was for denial. After the planning commission meeting, they made some recommendations that staff was in favor. And we agree with the planning commission recommendation, which was the building height shall be no greater than 40 feet, including architectural features such as parapet walls, roof equipment, screening, and the like. Any of the sanitary surfaces shall be agreed upon between the applicant and the Public Works Director. Private sanitary services may be something that's required. And item three is the site plan shall reflect that the cottages are available for business use. Staff wants to recommend that the approval for condition three include cottages and townhomes to make sure that that's clear on there, that all the buildings on that site are for residential or business use, that none of them are limited to strictly residential. So future development of the site is not strictly townhomes with residences only. Staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have. As I said, Chris Haley is here as well to answer any questions.
Mike, can you go back one screen, I'm sorry, keep going back, keep going back. Sorry, I thought it was a couple, go back one more minute. Okay, right there.
Yes, sir.
On the proposed site plan, the commercial square footage of 23, 453.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to always be the minimum? And did I understand you to say that the cottages could be residential or commercial?
Correct.
But the 23, 453 proposed commercial space must always be commercial?
That is, that is no longer accurate, no, sir. That was what was proposed for the first two buildings that were commercial or residential, or commercial on the bottom floor, residential on top. Now, that will stick with the first, or the two buildings that front on Fairhope Avenue, and going back to the proposed site plan, on the bottom of your screen, left-hand side, those two buildings there are retail commercial on the bottom floor with residential possible on the second and third floor. So that's where that 23, 453 square feet for commercial comes from.
That's what I.
And, and that number could increase because we have now recommending that the townhomes and cottages.
But it can't decrease, that's what.
But it cannot decrease, correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted clarification on. And Mr. Haley, you're okay with six-foot sidewalks along Brown and Stimson?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my preference. We're trying to make a transition from a very commercial front of Fairhope Avenue, and Stimson is very quiet, dead-end street. We thought it was more appropriate to do a more residential side.
And the reason I ask, there was also a mention at one time of a five-foot, but our, our, you know, ordinance has said it must be a minimum, must never be less than six, but you, I just want to make sure you're, you're okay with that. Questions, counsel?
My question would be on parking. Obviously, the parking changes, change in design. Being that you've got to keep this as available, I guess, for the commercial, was there adequate? I mean, it looks like it's adequate parking.
There, now that the property is in the Central Business District overlay, the Fairhope's zoning ordinance only requires parking for the residential uses only. Previously, the abundance of parking, it was not in the Central Business District, so required more parking. Now that's in the CBD, there is more parking than required at this point in time for even if they were all commercial uses.
Jimmy, I have about four times, four and a half times required parking on the site. There's only 32 that would be required. It wouldn't make sense economically on a 32, but you've got 100, Mike, it's 140. So I have parking spots in total, so. Yeah. So you have more parking spots than required.
And looking at the site plan on the face, you have to look, there's also garages that are inside some of those footprints, so the parking is not just individual on the street parking or around where those townhomes are to be located, there's actual individual garages for those individual units as well. That's a little harder to see on the site plan.
You don't happen to have a street view of, or a rendering of what those cottages would look like, do you?
I did not have one in this, I can hand you, I think I have one inside the.
There's one you can kind of get aside once, it was in the.
It's on the email.
It was in the, in the stat full packet that you have on the staff report. There are the renderings are included in that.
Yeah, looking down.
I don't have them up to put on the screen.
Okay, yeah.
And there's sketches of the different Cottage A and Cottage B included as well.
Okay. Yeah, I've got elevations.
I can make one there as well. In regards to parking in front of some of those businesses, all street parking on the right-ofways on Brown and Fairhope Avenue is available to the public. You'll see what, oh, looks, let's go back one, looks almost like a right-ofway in the middle of the site. That is actually will be a private road, so that, unlike some of our street parking, can be earmarked for businesses that are on. earmarked for businesses that are on that, within the site. So there is some, unlike a lot of the CBD, there can be what appears to be street parking available to the tenants that are in the commercial developments.
What street did you say that goes through the middle? Which one are you talking about?
This here, yes.
Okay, yeah. That's a private street or a public street?
It is private.
But will be available to?
It, it, unlike the parking along Brown and Fairhope Avenue, which cannot be reserved for any tenant, they're public spaces, this along the private street can.
Okay.
And/or residential order, they can choose to leave signs off of it, and it's fair game to anyone.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Oh, Mike, we were talking before the meeting, and I believe that you said that once the developer made a couple of the proposed changes, that the staff was in agreement now. And I want to just reemphasize that although staff recommended denial prior to the planning and zoning meeting, the staff, would you, although, would you say you recommend approval post-changes and post-meeting?
Yes, sir, that's correct. If these changes, the recommended changes from planning commission, if those had been in the original submittal, staff's recommendation would have been for approval rather than for denial of the project.
I thought that was pretty important.
Yeah. No, to be clear on that, we, before the planning commission meeting, we had already changed that, but it's too late to get the paperwork out and the staff recommendation. Planning Commission Chair and I spoke with Chris and had a resolution by the time of the meeting that resolved a lot of our concerns.
I got you. Very good. Okay, counsel?
I make a motion. We approve as presented with the addition of the language Mike indicated on the, including townhomes and the available as business, commercial properties.
Okay, we have a motion with the specific language that staff recommends with regard to the, I think it's, you know, saying that the townhomes may be commercial, maybe used commercially as well. Is that correct, Mike? Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And does that include all the other staff recommendations from the planning commission?
I would say including all staff recommendations.
That was just the one that wasn't.
I think they were already in there.
Everything but that one, I think. I don't think that was in there.
The, the planning commission had made three conditions, and the staff is recommending to alter the third condition to include the townhomes. That way encompasses all the proposed buildings on the site.
Yeah, Jimmy, can I just ask you to withdraw that and just say, subject to planning commission recommendations and the additional staff recommendation?
Sure. I'll withdraw the motion and make a motion that we approve as presented along with the planning commission recommendations and staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we'll motion in a second. Mr. Haley, you'll, I mean, I typically don't do this, but I just know, been through a lot. So I do want to ask you before we go through more.
I'm happy with.
You okay with those?
I'm okay with everything, and, you know, I'll credit Lee Turner who kind of brought up the whole can the cottage be used for commercial? And I resisted at first, but Lee was really thinking, you know, if you grow 40, 50 years, what if Stimson or Brown facing the post office gets more commercial feeling, the post office isn't there, whatever the future may hold.
Yep.
Let's not restrict this to residential only because it is in the Central Business District. So I really, you know, I credit him for kind of opening all of our eyes. I think we all kind of said, yeah, that's pretty smart to say, we're all dead and gone 40 years from now, we don't want this property and of a residential only that can be used commercially. So I'm fine with those additional stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Counsel President, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote for possible involvement.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Did we just say it all at one time? I couldn't.
I said it.
Okay, did you get aye?
I, I said it, it just wasn't very loud.
Okay, all right. So motion carries. All right, item 18 is the agenda item that was added. I'll just go ahead and read this. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City Council hereby authorizes the following trigger points for shutting down the city as it relates to tropical storm or Hurricane Zeta. At any such time, a state-ordered mandatory evacuation order is in effect for the City of Fairhope. City buildings will be closed and nonessential personnel will not be required to report to work. At any such time, a hurricane warning is in effect, city buildings will be closed and nonessential personnel will not be required to report to work. And if as of, and this is the amended one, 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 27, 2020, or any time thereafter, a tropical storm warning is in effect for the City of Fairhope. City buildings will be closed on Wednesday, October 28, 2020, at 3:00 PM, and nonessential personnel will be asked to stay home. City officials will make the determination as to whether or not to reopen on Thursday, October 29, 2020, no later than Wednesday, October 28, 2020, at 5:00 PM. All staff will report to work on Thursday, October 29, 2020, unless notified by their supervisor that the city is still closed. I'll entertain a motion, pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Public participation for non-agenda items. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you'll please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes. Seeing no one, I will close public participation for non-agenda items and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.